Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Minister Plan Woods and Carter from May 6, 2024. Our first public hearing is public hearing for a special permit application of 1525 Central Street, Lot 5 Patriot Circle, MAP 499, Placels 51 and 42, expansion of a junkyard. Do I have a representative? We'll open the this public hearing meeting at later on, another five minutes.
Do you want me to wait?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Anthony Cleese. I'm with Haley Ward here on behalf of LKQ Northeast. Also with me tonight is John Marcel from LKQ. So what you have in front of you is a GIS printout from the Minister GIS to kind of orient you to the area if you're not familiar with with where LKQ is and what they do. So at the end of Central Street, just before you start to get to Sterling and Research Drive, they have an existing facility accessed off of Central Street. Essentially, they work with what they call Hulk vehicles, where they have dismantled, you know, inoperable vehicles will come in, they dismantle them, drain all the fluids inside of a building, and then they transport those Hulk vehicles out into their storage yard. And so the purpose of this project is for them to expand their storage yard into a vacant property, the last lot at the end of Patriot Circle, which abuts the property on the back side. So their access is still Central Street, but this particular property, which is highlighted in red on those maps there, is Lot 5 of Patriot Circle. So the plan that we have here before you is essentially that, clearing that land and expanding their storage area, which is to the southeast of the property, having two driveways of access in to the new storage area, same surface as they have here, compacted gravel, and then graded to a stormwater basin that we're putting in to to make sure we have a stormwater to match pre and post calculations for that. In and around the edges of this would be an eight-foot-high chain link fence with privacy slats connecting into their existing chain link fence. They have a secure facility. It's all chained in, chain link fenced in. So we would expand that. We're going to add privacy slats in and around that for some screening. This is an industrial subdivision, Patriot Circle, if you're not familiar with that area. It's off of Jitec Park, which is all industrial, existing industrial buildings. You can see how close they are there on either side.
What are you doing on the curb cut? Is it a gate or?
Yeah, so I'm just going to flip this for a second. You can kind of see.
Emergency access.
Yeah. So this kind of gives you an idea of the layout. So one of the comments that came up through the submission from the Fire Department and Police Department, more information on.
Can you turn that just a little bit more because on this side we can't quite see it? I think they got this whole table back further than normal. Yeah.
How about Ken? So yeah, to get back to your question, there is no intended access off of Patriot Circle for this operation. All of the operation is internal to the existing operation. But absolutely, for emergency access purposes, we have a proposed 12-foot-wide double gate for emergency access. So that's not intended to be used for any daily operation. If an emergency vehicle need to get out there, you can access it right here off of Patriot Circle. Great question. So this this kind of shows what the intended layout of the storage area would be. Comment that came back from the Fire Department was they wanted to make sure that you had a 20-foot-wide spacing between the rows, which we've laid this out, you know, for that, so they can come in and around. Emergency vehicles could come in and around all these areas. It's more than wide enough for what they need, the vehicles they use to move things around. Basically, you loaders, full truck, pickup trucks, and things like that. That's a that's a brief overview for you. There isn't too much to it. If you have any specific questions.
I'd like to open up the the public meeting, the site plan application, the 1525 Central Street, Lot 5, Patriot Circle, MAP 499, Placels 51 and 42A, expansion of a junkyard. So both the site plan and the special permit are now open. Okay. The drainage calculation, does this now, will some of the drainage come from the existing junkyard or is that drainage just?
No, it's pretty much all from this lot. The way this lot is higher, everything, everything runs this way currently. So we're going to be working with the existing grades as they continue to run this way. We're just trapping it in a stormwater basin with an outlet structure. And then there's an existing berm here now. So we're basically matching how the site sets up. We're just updating it with some water quality controls, making the stormwater cleaner, and then discharging it out the way the water goes.
Okay.
The DPW has reviewed that. One of their comments, they wanted some more information. They want some soil testing done. We did some soil testing observed by the DPW, and they were satisfied with that. And there was some other comments about peak rates and subdrains, which we've addressed that. I believe they submitted an email saying that they were okay.
Okay. It's just a weird area.
What's that?
It's just a weird area right now.
It's a weird area now. Yeah, I mean, it looks like, you're looking at some of the old aerial photos, coming back to the early 90s. It looks like this was cleared at one time. Probably through the buildout of Patriot Circle, this was cleared. The growth, this gets come back since the 90s, but it's not, it's not old growth.
Not old growth.
Yeah, but yeah, right now it is treated. Actually, there's remnants of old piles of granite blocks. So it looks like maybe they were doing some work here, maybe had some earthwork somewhere else and dumped some stuff there. So we're actually going to use some of that to hold back some of the fill over in here with the cut into the slopes. We're going to build like a little boulder wall with some of the materials that were left from, like, I think it's site work that may have been done.
Okay. Okay. I'll open up the audience. Do I have anyone from the audience have any comments or questions that on this project? I'll ask a second time. Do I have anyone from the audience who has to comment on this? If I has any questions on this project? Clear than last time, I'll ask. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, and from the board.
Very forward. Pretty tough.
Yes, but it is.
Okay, no.
There's a.
Okay, can you go through the comment of the developer here?
So I can, Elizabeth would like to, I can go through.
Yeah, go ahead.
Whatever we'd like to do. A few comments here. The Police and Fire Department were one of them regards to access and whatnot. I didn't receive a follow-up or anything from the Fire Department. So I don't know if they had an opportunity to look at this. But we did add snow storage to show where that would be, which is on the exterior. I think they were concerned that if you're piling snow, that we have a spot that would restrict access. So we're not showing that. We had a 20-foot-wide maneuvering aisles as they requested, which is consistent with the current NFPA. And DPW, like I mentioned, they had comments about snowmaw, which we addressed. So they were fine there.
And they also had the default ordinance.
Yeah, which, as I mentioned, we did that with the DPW, and they were there. So we did that with them. That was all I had from outside departments. And then Ms. Wood had a few comments too, which, Ms. Elizabeth, if you'd like to go through them, I can go through them, whatever is preferred.
Um, hold on. Did we get the Fire Department?
No, I haven't seen anything back.
Says prior to any explosive being used or handled in any, prior to any use being permitted by the Fire Department. Complain, compliant with compliant with MBO Chapter 148, Section 19. It also says, and all explosive work needs to be compliant with 527 CMR 1, Chapter 65.9.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, we stand up for any project, hopefully. We shouldn't need any blasting. Absolutely, that's a big moment, you know, anything would have to follow the state federal laws for that. Hopefully, hopefully not.
The Board of Health says that all hazardous fluids must be removed from discarded vehicles stored and disposed of properly. All spills must be cleaned up, and any contaminated soils and cleaning materials must be disposed of as hazardous waste, unless materials are tested and shown not to be hazardous or otherwise determined not to be hazardous waste.
You have the hulks, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they're completely right. Yes, sir.
The Police Department says that the alarm contact information should be provided to the Police Department at current. And then in my memo, planning development director's memo, um, I'll just go through all. I said that as far as accessibility, we need a different, we need additional information. Additional information has been provided detailing the location of storage areas. This will need to be evaluated by fire meets and determine accessibility. Um, the applicant confirmed as far as safe pedestrian movement, the applicant confirmed that no sidewalks are being proposed and provided information to justification as to why. The board will need to evaluate the applicant's response and determine if this is satisfactory. Um, there's no lighting plan provided, and the applicant provided justification as to why lighting is not provided. The board's going to have to evaluate this response and determine if that's satisfactory. The applicant said that as far as a parking plan, the applicant stated that a parking plan is not needed and provided justification. So the board has to decide if that's satisfactory. Snow storage is sufficient. That wasn't originally provided, but they came back with the additional information and provided the snow storage. The, as far as landscaping, the applicant says they're not providing landscaping. So the board has to determine if this is also satisfactory. And that's all I have.
Okay, I get that. So with that, do you have a list of waivers that you requested?
There's, there's no waivers requested.
Well, your waivers, no bother. No lighting, we got a waiver on that.
They didn't, they didn't submit any waiver requests.
So by understanding of the zoning, the various regulations, that we need to ask for waivers, but their discretionary are not needed. So happy to ask for whatever waiver you think we need, but my interpretation of the zoning is that we weren't asking for a waiver for anything. Parking, for example, we're not adding anything that generates new parking. We're not adding building, we're not adding employees. This is strictly storage. It's an expansion of storage. We have parking. Parking is on Central Street. People are not allowed.
Thank you.
This is all internal to LKQ employees. So landscaping, we're not doing any landscaping. Lighting, they don't operate at night. So it's just an expansion of their existing facilities.
That was my other question.
But procedure.
Yeah.
But procedure, if we, if we need to ask for waiver, then happy to. Hopefully, I'll ask for whatever waiver we think we might need.
I didn't know I was.
I saw, I wonder if you're right.
Yeah, we got to make sure that.
Yeah.
Um, fine. Um, I don't have anything else.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
First person?
Yes, we want to close the public, public hearing. I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second question. Any further discussion? If you're down, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Now I move to close the public meeting.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the public meeting. Do I have any further discussion? Here and then I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This will be taken care of, leave one in the meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. The regular meeting, roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Sal Tifoni, excused. Char Maturisa.
Here.
Tom Carenan. Jason Harren.
Here.
Dean Bayer, excused. John Sisza.
Yes. Minutes of March 4 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made to approve. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Plan submitted in the 53 Pheasant Run Circle in Sheldon Hill Drive, MAP 363 lots, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, and 59. Yeah, 505 Lot 21.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Leroy, I'm a land surveyor with Handing Engineering. And the purpose of this plan is is to combine several lots owned by Pheasant Run Realty Trust to create Lot 28, the existing house number 53 will be on, and Lot 9A on Sheldon Hill Drive, which is a vacant lot at present time.
So what are you doing with Lot 28?
Lot 28 is a combination of several parcels, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
So it's all just.
We have seven parcels.
And you'll note in my review memo, Lot 9A is not in the water slide protection zone, and the applicant is claiming it's part of an open space community development, and thus has the required 260 feet, which is provided. But our office didn't have any record of this open space community development agreement. So I was asking the applicant to provide plans or evidence that this agreement.
Yeah, I have a special permit.
Do you have that?
The lots are created.
Give it to the chair.
I formally have approval of definitive plan divided 26, November 26, 1997, special permit application for cluster development under Open Space Protection Regulation. Okay, that's good. Now what I got to know is where your open space is on this part of this plan.
Uh, it's not shown on because none of these lots are subject to open space.
It's outside of this area. Okay, so you're doing here, what you're doing here, you're taking.
Basically, consolidating all the lots on Pheasant Run Circle and combining them so that they're all part of Lot 28, which is the house lot number 53. And then.
There's an existing garage there. So that's what's that, that's going to go with.
For title purposes, we give you reference, all the D references on here. So all these parcels are going to be one lot. Lot 28.
Oh, these are all going to be one lot?
Yep. And then Lot 9A will be on Sheldon Hill Drive and stay on its own by itself.
Okay. Okay. I don't see any of your land law currently, right?
Uh, yeah, some of them are parcels, some of our lots. So all of these are big frontage lots.
Yep.
Oh, these are the frontage over here?
Yep.
These lots don't change at all, do they?
They do. They all become part of Lot 28.
They all come? Yeah, but you're going to, okay.
He's just combining all.
Yeah, we're consolidating into one lot.
So you're going to end up with one big lot there. And none of this is in the Y. But nothing will be, they still would have to comply with the original cluster development.
Right, and Lot 9A.
This is a problem aside again.
Yep.
I guess saying for the future.
Yeah.
Okay, so that continues to carry. And so if they want to come with this land, it still has to be, meet that, the original criteria.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that is understood, that we maintain that same criteria. Okay. In that case, I don't have a problem. Um, any questions in the board?
Endorsed.
Endorsed. Endorsed. And I want to make sure this is, copy is given to Elizabeth for my record profile for sure. Okay. Um, do you have drawings of the entire Sheldon Hill project?
Uh, I do have the original subdivision plan here. I can see that.
I hate to say it, I'll admit that we don't know who, but somebody cleaned house sometime in early 2000s. And when doing that, their drawing that we had was refiled, I'll put it that way.
Oh. Owned by 17.
Okay, that's good. Beautiful.
Can you get, can you email that to me?
Sure.
Yeah, you can have this one.
We'll get it emailed. We'll get it PDF.
Yeah, I'd rather have the PDF.
You can put it in the file.
It's recorded at the registry. It's all in the mail.
Okay, that'll be good.
Okay. Yeah, okay, it shows the trails on the open space. Oh, back here. Okay. So we're there. Good, there's that copy. Good. I have a motion on the table to endorse the plan. Do you want me to endorse it? Do I have any further discussion? Here and I'll call for the vote. All in favor, endorse. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, your my letter will probably be ready in the morning, but we'll see. Sometimes we have problems with our scanner.
We're right around the corner.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to find. Old business, no, new business. Special permit application for 1525 Central Street, Lot 5, Patriot Circle, MAP 499, Placels 51 and 42A, expansion of a junkyard. Do you have a motion?
I move to accept the vote. I'm starting with that.
I have a motion made and seconded.
For the special.
For the special permit. Any discussion on that?
I would just include any department that.
Which, which, which?
Special person?
You were talking about it.
Yes, yes.
I think, by understanding, the last outstanding one was the Fire Department. We did not receive a follow-up from their comments that they were satisfactory with the last.
Yeah, so we make the condition that.
I think that would, the Fire Department should be one that should be included.
Right. Okay, so the condition would be that they comply with the request of the Fire Department.
About explosive?
A condition.
The one about explosive?
No, that was what it held.
No, it was a follow-up one they had about access.
Access, access and maneuverable.
Because the first version we submitted didn't show the potential layout of the Hulk vehicles. And so we followed up with that layout for them to review. I don't think they had a chance to look at it.
But they haven't come back to us on that.
And that the planning director reviewed.
Yeah.
I have a here, Carol, if you have a.
The Fire Department will need to know specifically where the storage will be located, the apparatus accessible need to be compliant with the CMRs. The Fire Department needs 20-foot access roads, proper turning radius, and it has to be maintained at all times, which means the snow removal plan cannot compromise the accessibility. Water supply will have to be compliant with the Mass General laws as well. That's.
You're talking about the, you know, dated April 9?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the condition. And you do show that on the drawing with the layout.
Yep.
And now, do they have, will the Fire Department have the key to that back gate?
That would be coordinated. We put that known the plan to coordinate with the Fire Department, so they would need to absolutely have access to that. That could be another condition. I think that makes sense to make sure that's in there.
Right.
We have, we have to, we have to make sure the Fire Department's okay. That's always just. They could always do that too. They have the tools to do that.
They have to, I think they would.
The best key, yeah.
I'm sure they have one big enough.
Full interest to cooperate and work with the Fire Department however we need to.
Okay. So the only condition we have to comply with the Fire Department comments.
And the standard.
And the standard. Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, say. Oh, this is a roll call. A special permit?
We're not on the phone.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, we, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Now I move to put the site plan up.
Site plan application. 1525, I gotta read it. Central Street, Lot 5, Patriot Circle, MAP 499, Placels 51 and 42A, expansion of a junkyard. Do I have a motion?
And just get a.
Motion made and seconded.
And the same two provisions.
And the same two conditions. Any further discussion? Here and none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Communications. Coria State Subdivision. Conservation restriction from November.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Coria from November 3, 1994. Want to review restriction, meet with development and to decide what course of action to be taken. Do we have a representative here? Okay.
All right, I reached out with certified mail to the developer in a letter dated April 8, and I made multiple phone calls, probably six, to the developer and left voicemails. I did not get a response. He's alive. Yeah, he lives in Princeton.
And I see you also did not get a response. And I see you also did not get a response through the D P W, you definitely know what it actually costs to be basic.
I I asked the D P W for an estimate, and they gave me a brief rundown of what they think is required. But when I asked them if they had an estimate, they said negative, and that's all they said.
So we don't have?
So we don't have an estimate.
Well, I can't, let let's just go back so you understand where the issue was. Somebody complained to the Board of Health, I understand initially. And then to Conservation, and it finally ended up with us. That there's a trail in the back there. And the neighbors, the people that live there were disposing of the, I wanna say yard waste.
Yard waste, yeah.
In be- behind their homes and blocking the trail with the lot yard waste. So we were trying this, we also have. At the time, we had put a bond for completion towards acceptance, used to say it never happened. And how much was that for?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Which will not be enough to complete.
Which is not enough to complete anything. But we can use that that money to um.
Improvements.
And to do improvements, to clear the trails.
And why are we going, why are we going after you all?
Well, we have to go up to the developer because the money is the.
He owns the property.
He didn't put the grass there.
No, he didn't put the grass there.
He owns the property where the dumping taking place.
He owns the property and he's responsible for it.
Never transferred to the city.
Because he never cleared that, that was not an open space, and he owns the property. And it's always all part of the original development. And I can remember that there was that the trails were gonna be left open and maintained, and that didn't happen.
Was it?
So we can do one of two things. Is we can stock proceedings to take the thirteen thousand nine hundred uh plus dollars. And with that um with our vote, and we can take that money. And then it's up to the to the city, uh to the mayor, to how it's to be used.
The mayor.
And he he could then, it would go into the general coffers, and then he would take in, or the city would clean the trail with that money. There's not enough money, and they have to pave the roads, and they have the road accepted. So that's another whole issue of a road on the condition of a subdivision done way long time ago, never acted on. And uh it just not, wasn't enough bond uh to cover the the real fence. It probably was enough at that time, but if you wait long enough, it just doesn't like you.
Why are we holding the bond?
Well, we held the bond originally, it wasn't done.
How was it done?
Because there was a shortage of staff in the department prior to us, and we, and nobody ever dealt with it, it wasn't managed properly.
So.
And now we inherited it.
It was thirty years ago.
And the and the road was never accepted. So the road was.
It was a law, it was.
Just for.
Oh, there's a lot of them.
We're working, we're working through them.
Just from my understanding, what is the complaint and the problem that we're trying to solve? It's dumping on private property that is still.
There's two problems.
And like, what is it on this guy's private property?
I think that's part of the subdivision. And it was, I think that was shown as an open space, but not, that was by before we had actual open space uh program. So I run, I run east side.
Why would you not take care of that?
But it's a two-pronged problem.
We've sent them, it's two pro, two, we.
We have a dumping problem and the road's not finished.
Yeah.
Well, you can, I don't think you can use the thirteen thousand dollars, those earmarked for improvements of the road to clean up the.
The mayor can, well, we can get an opinion from K P Law.
Well, how much can they?
But the mayor can use money.
I don't know, I don't even, like what?
How much can they be there? Guys, there's some grass that means.
I don't know, I have to.
It's a little tile for if you.
A little leak field.
I haven't wiped out this shit.
I have, I have a picture of um of the debris.
It's a little, they have a tractor and cleaning up and pushing on the other side.
Yeah, um yeah, I mean.
That's not thirteen thousand dollars.
I agree, but what do we do with the thirteen thousand? Also, the road has not been done, the road is not completed.
It wasn't paved, which.
It was paved, but it was never just, it wasn't complete, the sidewalk, you know, yeah.
Oh my god. But it's only Commonwealth sidewalk, it's not a local side.
And the paperwork, basically, the sidewalk's not complete, the uh.
Which was, a local side, Commonwealth Circle both.
Yeah.
No, it's just.
Apparently just Commonwealth Circle.
It's it's just one of the streets, um. I'm trying to.
Commonwealth Circle.
It's only one of the.
Commonwealth Circle.
I honestly don't know why this is our issue.
Right, ours, right.
I mean, the thirteen thousand, I can understand, because the com- this started with a complaint about dumping. And to me, it's a Board of Health issue, a Conservation Commission issue, I don't know why it's our issue.
Right.
It would be, it would have, it would originally be that, but the the agreement from November of nineteen ninety four says the planning board's in charge of enforcing it.
Enforcing dumping.
Yeah.
I think this.
It was a weird condition.
The.
It was a weird condition in ninety four, but that's what it says, that the planning board has the authority over it.
Planning board doesn't have the powers of enforcement.
I know, I know.
Well, it's uh.
We're making the.
You know the phone calls.
Well, that was at that 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 time, so we, we have to abide by it, so.
I don't know.
But still, who did it? We go, go. It's probably one guy that dumped that, hey, maybe, maybe crap, you know, you're gonna be sued, this guy shouldn't go after him, not us.
Yeah, he should, but at the same time, we've. Let's divide into two things, one is the dumping, okay? We have sent numerous letters and multiple contacts, okay, Mr. Horgan?
Mister Horgan.
Can I just.
Okay, Mister Horgan.
They said that the, that's what we typed both the lots.
Yeah.
So give it to Conservation.
You can designate, the board can designate somebody else to do it.
Okay.
So motion.
Um, in the letter, it said the board's designee.
Okay, you got a motion. If they're willing to do it, let them do it.
Oh, that was it? That will clear that part. They would hear that, but we still have the fourteen thousand dollars in the kidding.
We gotta deal with this.
And we gotta deal with it, we're going to, we're going to be going, we're trying to go through all of these to clear them out, because we don't wanna be holding money anymore.
Well, so we separated up, the one thing we deal with is is we've made a request to them, so I'm I'm saying that where it's trails, we can, we can designate it to be uh to direct department, I don't care. And they make arrangements to claim the trails.
Conservation can work directly with them.
What's that?
For Conservation.
Uh, that's what, uh, that the Land Trust sets a, trail suits.
So they're.
Okay.
Yeah, the trail suits, I mean, they're, they do a lot of trails, and they they can do that.
It's it's not just trails, it's open space, and it's tons of dumped debris in the open space.
More, more than just grass, literally tons.
And the open, and the and the debris is, when it rains, running down into people's swimming pools in their yards, and it's it's causing problems.
So it's more than yard waste then, it's literally tons of stuff.
It's grass clippings and leaves and sticks and.
Should I have them back on my head?
Uh, I don't know, I.
So I guess we can do two things, you can make a motion to uh designate a conservation agent to enforce the the dumping. And then the board can take proceedings, you can direct me to take proceedings to going into declaring this default and reclaiming the money. We've got to do, we've got, we've got.
After thirty years, something.
Yeah, but the uh my concern is the thirteen, the, I thought the thirteen thousand dollars was specifically earmarked for the roads.
Yeah.
And it might be, and it might be.
Yes. But they're in default.
But we need to, we need to get that in default.
It it just, just the, just the the value to, to have it surveyed and a, and the the right away drawn up properly for the city, we try to thirteen thousand dollars.
But at the end of the day, the mayor makes the decision as to how that money gets spent, but the board has to go through the process to release the money.
Okay.
Okay, so I I make a motion to authorize you to take, I think it's similar to Sawyer Way, right?
Sawyer Way, we listed Sawyer Way, so we can do the same thing.
Exactly.
So I, so I make that motion to authorize the planning director to.
I second that.
Take the next step.
To take the next step to um release the thirteen thousand dollars.
And for Conservation, or are we going to reception?
I think it's two separate motions.
Two separate.
So you've already got that on the board.
So that first motion is to. I think you mean a motion for the for the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so let's let's deal with that first. So on the first motion, they refer to Conservation uh to be taken care of, motion made.
That is.
Any further discussion on that?
Designate.
Designate, okay, so motion made and seconded. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
No, Carol.
The second motion is Carol's motion to s- to staff proceedings, uh to the director, director, the planning director, to staff proceedings on taking of the bond, uh which is held by the city treasurer.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a motion made and seconded on that. Any further discussion? Here, none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Okay, City Constitution, forty four twenty four, read short-term rentals, the planning director scheduled this for a public hearing.
Mister B for June third.
Uh, do we have something already?
I don't think so, it was the. I don't think we do, I think we're clear.
Okay, so June third, six thirty, you do the motion.
Second.
June third? Yeah.
Six thirty.
Now, this is changed again.
It's, it is.
Okay. June third, six thirty. I have a motion made and seconded to schedule this petition for June third at six thirty. Any discussion? Here, none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Letter dated April eighteen twenty twenty two from Robert Sevettelli, the zoning for casino. Both review letter and discuss, do I have a presentation?
I have some words to say, yes, if I could pass this along. First of all, my new title is Vice President of Leamster Development Corporation. And we've been in existence for about forty-five years, working diligently.
Did you say your name for the record already?
A big question.
Did you already say your name for the record?
Yes, I did.
Did I missed it?
Robert A. Song.
Got it.
Crosshair.
Okay. Thank you. Negation proceeds. Uh, so I I have been working, we have been working diligently, and there's gonna be explanations of just exactly what we've been doing the last few years. It's been extensive, by the way. Uh, you're gonna be kinda surprised, some of the things that we went on uh for the last couple of years. But on a personal level, uh and I can speak for probably four or five you on this board, that uh the last time we attempted to get that slot power in, uh we were defeated by a score, uh by three to two vote by the Gaming Commission. Uh, the city of Leamster at that time had a referendum vote, and sixty-one percent of the community, about a little over eight thousand votes, and sixty-one percent of the community that voted in favor of it.
Okay.
Uh, what happened? It was one of my biggest losses, certainly as a city official at that time, because I thought that that we deserved the license, and I thought we would handle handle it very well, and that from the community's sake. Planning would work diligently, hours and hours, that Baltimore group helped us out very much. Uh, so at that particular time, it was a great disappointment to me. Now, let me, let me keep it as simple as possible, what's happening now. There's three plus one licenses authorized by the state, three of them. Encore has got one of them, MGM's got the other. The third one was supposed to go to southeast Massachusetts, which would be down Lubedford, Tottenham, that area. The Native Americans have won their case, the federal case, and they will be putting up some sort of uh gambling facility in the southeast play, which does not require a license. What we're trying to do is, we have legislation in, we're trying to get that license in northwest accounting, particularly Leamster. Uh, we've designated a number of acreage that we needed, uh we've got plenty of people working out there. But right now, we're looking for an overlay, obviously. We're trying to show Boston that we're willing and able to be able to handle this big project. And as you can see, uh the advantages of it are innumerable, particularly uh the kind of host uh funds that we would receive. Interesting enough, I was on Boston at the State House, and I was giving some testimony to this, to a, to a legislative body. And who is there? The Plaimville. And they were looking for additional, uh they were actually looking for additional games, gaming devices to be played at their facility. And they were talking glowing remarks about what has happened down there, particularly on the money end. I think they're raking in about four million a year. They got a forty million dollar budget, and they're getting four million dollars from the their gambling facility. And what they're looking for is obviously trying to get more in there, because there's a percentage that uh that they will be getting. So I would like to introduce you to our president, Dick Dian, who's uh here today this evening. Uh, he'll kind of fill you in on some of the these things that are going on uh with our group.
It's Bob, my my name is Dick Dian, I'm the president of Leamster Development Group. Um, as Bob mentioned, um there's a bill pending, there are bills pending of the, in the House and the Senate, um which would, let me summarize this as simply as I can, which would um uh essentially add to the Area C, which is the southeast portion, and take North Worcester County, North Worcester County, this is Leamster, Pittsburgh, and and a couple of communities surrounding it. Um, uh and permit the Gaming Commission to issue a license for a full casino, gaming casino, um, uh, as part of the third license. In other words, it's C plus or Region D, if you wanna call it that. Um, I think that's what we've been calling it at the uh at the State House, uh Region D. So that the third license could be either in Region C, which is the current southeast corridor, um or North Worcester County. Um, the thinking uh behind the bill is that the one part of the state that is not being served by the current casino um lineup uh is central Massachusetts, and particularly north central Massachusetts. Um, uh and into New Hampshire. All of that money, for the most part, was gaming, goes down south. It goes to Rhode Island, we had studies done, extensive studies done on this, uh or or Rhode Island, but primarily down down to either Foxwoods or the, what's the other one, MGM, I'm sorry, well, he get, oh, he get down three ninety five, um in Connecticut. We're losing awful lot of money in the state uh to uh to Rhode Island and Connecticut, uh because we don't have that third casino. And uh the thinking is that situating a casino in North Worcester County would capture this money we're losing, that the state is losing right now, because the state's not getting the Gaming Commission, so to speak, that it could otherwise have. Um, so this bill has been pending, and it's still, it's um still alive, and there's a lot of interest. And what we're trying to show the um the legislators and all of their wisdom, uh that we can, we can handle it, and 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 we we're ready for it, uh and that the city is is backing this. Um, in order to do that, what we would like is to um have this board uh consider a recommendation uh that the city move forward uh with a project of this sort. Um, and we're asking this board to um consider uh the creation of an overlay, a zoning overlay, um to permit a casino. Uh, if we don't have a casino permitted uh by by law in the city, uh then it's hard to argue to the, to the legislators that uh we're ready to have uh this kind of 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 a facility and and intend to it. So uh that's the, that's the purpose of uh what we're looking for. I do have, I can hand these around so that a lot of people can look at them. Can I do that, or you?
You can help.
Thank you. Now, let me.
Thank you.
I think I have.
You can share.
Yeah, to share here. So. So we're, we're, uh, we're looking at essentially Jungle Road. If I can take you. This is Jungle Road right here.
Yep.
The legislation requires not less than seventy contiguous areas. What we're showing you is an overlay here. The check marks are the lots that would be added in the overlay district we're looking for here, which is primarily all undeveloped, uh, at the present time. The top land here is owned by Leominster Materials Corporation. The city owns this little parcel here from Jungle Road. Here, this is actually quite high, if you'll watch at it.
So would you be creating, like, an exit off of two ninety? I mean, would you give, would you give this its own off-ramp off of the?
Uh, well.
Certainly not gonna go on one seventeen and have a casino.
Weird.
There's, there's almost nobody in the city who'd be able to more than I do or supports the concept, so it's, uh, not all in favor of it. But, yeah, there are a hundred and thirty-two of us who live right here. We worked with this group, they were the Cordish Companies ten years ago. They were gonna do tons of improvements and, uh, I, I would need lots of assurances before I, you know, afford with that. Since then, just in the past year, we've approved three major projects in that area itself, which are gonna add tons of traffic. We've already suggested that they do major traffic redesigns in that regard.
And any project.
A lot of reservations.
Right. Any project of this sort will have to be completely planned out. Right. From all.
But you're asking us to recommend an overlay in an area that is already oversaturated and without any understanding of how that planning out would work. I have a hard time in advance saying sure, go ahead, and I'll write a check. And again, I totally support the idea of the project.
Um, I appreciate that, and, um, uh, it is so preliminary right now that we can't give you.
Let, let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. Okay. Yeah, uh, what you're doing is the area off of one ninety and, yeah, there's, there's a lot of ifs. We understand that. And I can remember, I asked Bob a good question, and I can't, and I can't remember. But when we were gonna, when we were going for the slot parlor, if I can remember correctly, our current zoning allows an industrial area, okay, inside entertainment.
Indoor recreation too.
Indoor recrea- okay.
Indoor recreation, exactly.
Indoor, and I thought at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, we had determined that that indoor recreation, that casino, could fall under that
And it may.
very, very brief definition, okay?
Yes.
And it's all in the definition, as I understand it. So what I'm looking, what I think is we can do, we have that indoor entertainment, is really what we're looking at, is clarifying the definition. Okay? Wouldn't necessarily need an overlay. And the definition in the site plan is we could, okay, and it still would have to go to the City Council for an audience, but we change the definition to specifically allow, okay, a casino. So there is no question. So I, I'm not sure that's the track I would go.
Well, there are several tracks.
There, there are several.
They, they get you to the same.
That's one. They, they get you there. I'm not, and I just wanna make sure that we have a proper track, that we're doing this, because, because I know we had approved it, and we go through the whole thing, and said that the indoor entertainment was, it allowed it. And that was the, that was what we had gotten, I was pretty sure that we had gotten approval, uh, through our city solicitor at that time. Okay? I would, so, the first thing I would do with this board is I would go back to the cit- current city solicitor and confirm that, whether that would cover it. Okay, and that's the easiest. I'm always looking for the easiest if I can. The, the second would be the step, we're gonna take our steps. The second would be to, to change the, clarify the definition to include it, and there would be specific. Okay, and then the third is be an overlay, because an overlay brings in a whole bunch of other things. Okay? And, and we would have, in doing that, we would have to, it would definitely be in the special permit category. Okay, nothing would be by right, and that, and that's why an overlay would be difficult, because in your definition, an overlay gives you by right. And we don't go by right. It would have to be a special permit, because we have to control, the biggest problem that I see here is traffic. And, and I would have to see a major traffic plan. This, this face of Jungle Road would have to become a full-lane road. There's, there's, there's a lot of other things, you know, that would have to be done to make that, because we're talking about a major, major entity here, so I wanna say it's on straight.
Right, and this is very preliminary. I don't have a site plan to show you right now.
No, no, and, and I don't expect it at this time. And that's why I'm saying, is I'm willing to, that's why I'm going, I'm saying that, I'm looking, you, you come in here and asking for a overlay. I look at an overlay as my third choice at this point. You know, the first part is if I can get it in my current ordinance to cover it, that's great. Okay? Number two, if I go to, still have to go to the City Council, because they're ultimate, then they say we can change the definition and to allow it, and, and it'd be allowed with a special permit, that's also good. The third is an overlay, but overlay brings in a whole other thing. So typically, when you do an overlay, it's by right. And there's no way that I wanna do it by right, because that would take it out of, there'd be strictly a site plan, and we could not, we could only deal with the, the actual property itself and not the contiguous area. So that's my biggest problem, and that's how I wanna end. Not that, that would say that, that's how I see the, the progression that we have to take here. Uh, may, you wait, have any comment on that?
The couple of concerns here, uh, is that, when you're talking about a casino, class A casino, you're talking about a high-rise.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and one of the concerns, obviously, we remember the last time we dealt with it, there was a lot of discussion on hotels. And how high you're gonna go up, you know, what kind of stories you're gonna have. The other thing was the entertainment part of it. Well, a, a class one casino is gonna have an arena, with, you know, up to thirty-five hundred people in it. Uh, this. You're gonna, you're gonna definitely have to have some kind of entertainment. All those things are gonna come into play, big time. Bigger than, bigger than the ones we had last time. Yeah, the slot, the slot parlor, uh, if you remember correctly, and I was, we were, we were actually sideswiped at the end when they said that they, they weren't gonna put a building up, they're gonna take Creasy to a die, and they're gonna convert it into a slot parlor. Which, which I, which I thought was ridiculous. Underhanded.
Yeah.
And, and, and they were, but their, their concern was getting, getting into, into that business in six months, so they wouldn't compete with Encore and those other places, if you remember correctly. That's what was going on. They were, they were panicking at Baltimore Group.
Right.
This particular, this particular thing we're doing now is gigantic. You're looking at five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred million dollar project.
Yeah, I realize that. Yeah, go ahead.
If, if we're talking about petitions and overlays, shouldn't I go to the City Council before us, and then the council would refer it for?
No, we'd refer it. We, we, we would determine what the overlay is, and where it would be, and then as a recommended, recommend, recommendation from us to the City Council.
Or should you don't want an overlay?
Huh?
You don't want an overlay.
If, if we decide to do that.
They, they can go either way. The planning board can have a petition to the City Council, or they can petition the City Council.
That's what I thought.
Well, someone has to petition to rezon.
They can, you can go. Somebody has to petition rezon. The petition to rezon can be done three ways. A city councilor, okay, with, you got, you know, five votes?
Six.
Five or six, okay. We can recommend, yeah, I, I can, I, the city councilor with six, five or six, he can recommend a petition. The planning board, correct, and a city, a registered city voter, uh, city, you can, can take, and with ten signatures, recommend a petition, uh, to the City Council. So those are the ways you get into the City Council. But there's a lot of work. You know, say, if there's gonna be an overlay, then we'd have to determine, we have to have some idea just where that overlay would be, what's encompassed. Okay, and that would mean, you know, uh, probably some surveys and some work on front.
Well, Mr. Sabatelli, what was the real, why was the, um, vote defeated, what, the last time?
Uh, the Hartman Association, there was a pool of money, a significant pool of money in, in, in the, in the, in the state government that was designed for, and I, I think I'm explaining it right.
It's for Stan.
Yes.
Very careful.
Stanley votes.
You've got a good memory, Bob.
This, this, this gentleman here actually wrote the legislation, so why don't you explain it to him? Huh?
What do you want me to explain?
City.
I want to know what, why, why you think it was defeated. What was, what you say?
It was three to two. We got beat, we got beat because they, they, they were running hard.
And indeed, it would be a majority vote, a supermajority vote.
They were running, yeah, yes, by the Gaming Commission.
And a simple answer.
City.
That didn't happen.
I just, somebody answer the question.
Politician.
Politics.
As well as.
State unit, for the record.
For the record, Stan Rosenberg, um, consultant to L G. And, uh, basically, it was politics. We can try to dissect who did what to who, but in the end, it was politics. It's the same reason we're here tonight, which is politics drove this community, this region into Region A, which meant you had no chance of succeeding in that process.
Okay.
You drew the short straw. Sorry to say.
Oh, so that was done up before, originally?
There, well, there was a long debate about in which region each part of the state would go.
Okay.
It was very clear what was gonna happen in Western Mass.
Right.
Region B. It was very clear what was gonna happen in southeastern Mass.
Right.
Because of the Mashpee Warped.
Right.
That left the Boston North and Boston West.
Right.
You guys could have gone into the, into B or into A. You got pushed into A, because the politics of the time required that there be a Region B with a strong potential for a facility in Springfield. So the Springfield folks had the ability to push Central Mass east. So they had a clear. That's all, that's all it was. Okay.
Excuse me, I should have, I should have introduced you to, Stanley is former Senate President for many, many years, and is involved in that, uh, that, that activity, so obviously, he know better than anybody.
And so you're going, the questions and the conversation, you're going right to the heart of the matter, which is, you need to get yourself organized and positioned.
Right.
So that if the legislature gives the Gaming Commission permission by creating a Region D to use the final remaining commercial license, you will be positioned and ready to go.
Right.
And, um, things that could slow you down should be dealt with as far in advance of this getting to the commission as possible. Okay, and so you're going to the heart of the matter. And, um, and the, um, H L T study that was done, um, by, H L T is one of the major consulting firms that does economic analysis of gaming, and figuring out where commercial outfits would, would be able to make, uh, a potential success of a gaming facility. And so what that analysis showed was that Massachusetts made enormous progress in repatriating Massachusetts players who were going to other states, dropping their money, creating jobs there, coming home if they did have a, uh, a addiction problem, and, uh, coming home to deal with them. And what ended up happening is the strategy worked, and we repatriated a very substantial portion of the Massachusetts players. That was really good news. Revenue, jobs, um, host community agreements that helped provide additional benefits to communities, which you would get in this situation as well, if you ended up, uh, succeeding in getting, uh, the license. And so, but the analysis, which surprised, it, it surprised me when I saw the data. The, the repatriation is all about Central Mass. Central Mass, because of the transportation system, is basically still going to Rhode Island and Connecticut. And, um, so there's money for the Commonwealth to be made. There's significant benefit to the community. And you're gonna be creating a lot of new jobs for this region, a lot of new business for vendors and companies here. And, um, there's a license sitting there that will go unused, the commercial license, because the Mashpee Warped, under federal law, has a right to gaming without state interference.
So they did win that. I thought they had lost that.
They won.
They won.
They did win, okay. For some reason, I thought they had lost the show.
The previous federal administration tried to kill them.
Yeah.
Think about what one of the major businesses was of a certain individual who had a financial interest. And so he, um, so basically, they, they stalled the project for southeastern Mass, the Mashpee. But under, under the federal law, if a state wants to tax and regulate in any way, they have to successfully negotiate a compact, which Massachusetts did. And in that compact, it says they cannot be a commercial casino in southeastern Mass. So they're sitting on one commercial license.
It has to go someplace else.
It doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to go, but.
It's a gaming commission, but it's to the Commonwealth's interest, eighty-five million on the, on the barrel head as soon as they issue, uh, make a choice and issue a license, and tens, if not hundreds of millions pretty soon, in annual gaming revenue coming into the Commonwealth.
Right.
So it's to the Commonwealth's advantage to review and revise. Is it not creating another license? They're basically taking an existing license and allocating it. And again, they don't have to, but if they're thinking straight, they're going to do it, because this region, which could benefit from economic
Right.
development and economic impact of, of gaming, is a perfect way to use that final license. And it does not gouge, it does not gouge the other entities, because each of them has become, has developed their own specialty, you know? And when you're a few miles from the airport, you've got players coming from all over the country, uh, conventions, you got people coming for, uh, vacations from Europe, et cetera, so they, they've got their market. They got their market. MGM has a different market, and, uh, the casino, uh, sorry, the, um, the slot parlor in southeastern Mass is, is a totally different thing. And Mashpee have their own plan and their own vision of what they're going to do. So there's room for this one additional facility without hurting anybody else in the business in Massachusetts.
Okay. Well, have you guys looked at the audences? Do you feel that we need it?
Well, we, we were really concerned, uh, we were concerned with, with, with building, the types of building, the, the heights of buildings and that type of thing. And I think by right, you can just put it up, right?
Well, you can go to four stories here.
Yeah.
Okay, so four.
It's five and industrial, I think.
Okay, and probably five and industrial. And so, so that's where we would have to change.
Yeah.
Um, and that's.
Wouldn't buy it back.
Oh, yeah, 'cause it, it's, well, even though it can lie, they, they'll go over seventy feet anyway, which is basically five stories. Uh, you know, you gotta figure ten, about ten feet of story.
At least ten.
Then your base, at least ten.
At least ten, ten to twelve.
Yeah, and ten to twelve are all good.
Maybe even bit, maybe.
Where you put your money, and on that type of stuff, it's even more like it's probably fourteen.
We have, we have gone to the fire department because we can't assume anything.
No, the aerials.
We're not gonna move ahead with anything.
No, we we looked at this and aerials available only go to seventy-five, eighty feet, okay? So that means that, not only have to look at that, and we have to work with the building department and make sure that we have the proper um, it calls regular system requirements and and so it's that type of stuff we have to look at, uh the safety requirements that other cities had that where they have high rises. So it's not only in the planning board, but a lot of that stuff will end up being in our site plan, which doesn't exist today. So there's a two.
I remember last time how much work it was.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, because because we have to.
We were going to play with the same spot, huh?
Yeah.
Was it gonna go right here in the same spot?
Yes.
You mean the first one?
The same.
The first one's gonna be across the street.
Across the street with it.
In that, in that that area close.
So we just approved a project where major tankers are gonna come down that street, but it's impossible right now.
So I I.
Just piece of property, yeah.
Well, what what's away for us to say, okay, we welcome, you know, we'll welcome it, but obviously the.
Um no.
Of obstacles, you know, at all.
So I I have, well, and I understand what John's saying the easiest way, but there it's the easiest way, we have to do it the best way.
Yeah.
And I I just checked Springfield's ordinance and they, it's funny, they have a definition for casino. They don't have the definition for recreational use, but their, but recreation, their, our definition of recreational use is included within their definition of casino. And they do have a casino overlay district, which I'm sure they created.
Yeah.
For MGM, so in my opinion, if you're looking for, my, I can't speak on behalf of the boards, but from my point of view, if you're asking my input, I think we need a casino overlay district. And that goes back to President Rosenberg's point, because if the gaming commission and the legislature are gonna take us seriously, I don't think we can go in and say, oh, look at our two line definition on recreational use, that's why we should get it. I think if we put in the effort and actually come up with a casino overlay district with a definition, I think that's better. And then I, then I see Paul's point, because you're gonna just want more than. I I'm not, all of us would, but more than just a.
Yeah.
You're gonna wanna know.
I mean, you're talking thousands of.
All of us.
We're gonna need to fix.
Right.
Yeah.
You're gonna be the way to fix it.
Come on, there's a, we have already, we had this, the last time we we had that same issue.
Well, you didn't, cause you didn't have.
We we didn't, but we didn't have it, we didn't have access to I ninety.
Right.
Which is, which is, which is would be private.
Which is what we need, I think.
Coming out of I.
You can't have that much traffic going off of one ninety under one seventeen, it's all that.
It's like a ready tunnel. Five, we set in the stadium.
No way.
I lived in the whole vice.
Right, doesn't it?
I know that.
If I could, if I could, I think that that will happen when the operator.
Yeah.
We, if it gets an operator, then they're gonna have to come in with a big plan to satisfy exactly what you're saying.
Would the state give you an exit?
And it's the operator who's gonna.
Would the state give us an exit off of one ninety?
Like we have to.
We have to.
I mean, we don't know.
They don't have to change the numbers anymore, now it's five mile, that makes it easier.
But they did down on four ninety-five, you noticed that little shoot off to that little industrial park?
They did that, yeah, the mobile.
Yeah, yeah, and the and the state did that. But I I think as far as the traffic.
You'd almost need, you'd almost need one.
You you do need one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wanted to bring the Starbucks.
I think, I think what we have to do is bring the operator in to you. Because there, it's their signature that's gonna make it happen, so you're gonna tell them what they, what you're gonna need.
Oh yeah. Well, see that, that's.
And they're gonna have to agree to pay for it, right?
Yeah, that's the other part that I have is seeing this in a few check boxes, is that a minimum, is that the maximum? You know, if we're gonna do an overlay, the overlay is gonna be.
How many acres?
Well, here's, yeah, the the legislation.
Like your lot.
The minimum was seventy. We need at least seven.
Yeah, the legislation calls for a minimum of seventy acres.
Yeah.
You know, one of the problems with Encore and one of the problems in Springfield was that it was supposed to be a resort casino. And Massachusetts is still waiting for its first resort casino.
Mm-hmm.
We need enough space and we've also learned our lesson by watching these, that people have to feel safe parking. So that means more space, mean, if you're gonna make it a regional uh casino, you want something that everyone is gonna feel comfortable coming to, as opposed to.
Would would it have to go to a vote to the city, I would think, a referendum?
On the overlay, yeah.
Oh yeah, on the overlay.
And the city council would refer to it with a casino.
Oh, 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 you mean on the casino? I mean another referendum?
Well, we have to, yes, the referendum.
Well, you have to go.
Yes.
There'd be a flare to in a vote.
You, you have to help to put out the referendum, right?
Yes.
The council.
If there's, you would, I don't know that you would definitely need it.
Well, no, you have to by law.
It's required.
It is required that there be a vote of the city. And it's the city council that authorizes that vote, right?
It's usually a special vote. Yeah. And it is required by law that, that's why they use the referendum, now we couldn't use the original referendum, wait. Totally, totally different.
That would be good, that would be good.
That would be good, well, I I think, I think we need, you know.
It could, it could. Kind of took, took too long anyway.
We have one more.
Yeah, we have one more.
Okay.
Yeah, you remember this gentleman?
Yes.
He's called.
Yeah, but no one recognizes me, right?
He's called.
Yeah, I didn't.
I'm David McKeon.
Long West County.
Yeah, it was the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yeah. That's right, I I um, I was president of the North Central Mass Chamber um and the North Central Mass Development Corporation and the Johnny Appleseed Trail Association, the tourism destination marketing organization for thirty years here. Um I, along with several of you, was very involved in trying to get the slot parlor here to Lemonster. Because of the economic impact that it would have. And that was just the slot parlor, um what we're talking about here is is a, is a much larger economic impact on the region. We're talking at least two hundred and fifty million dollars a year in local economic impact. Talking about a couple of thousand jobs, permanent jobs, not commonly construction jobs that would initiate the project. So that's why I'm involved, I've spent a lot of hours involved in in trying to um uh secure that slot parlor for Lemonster. The reasons are, were the same then as they are now. We really don't get our fair share here in North Central Mass.
We have it a long time.
That's right, this is all about regional equity as far as I'm concerned. This is re, you know, the the fact that that uh state projects and and uh just somehow seem to go over us.
They stopped at four ninety-five.
And well, or or yeah, or south of us.
Yes.
But but um this this opportunity is really important from an economic development standpoint for the entire region. This uh this uh particular uh project in Lemonster is, there is, there's history as it relates to the slot parlor. There's um, there is the adequate land. There are problems, there will be problems wherever it goes and traffic was was important, but uh our experience the last time around was in fact that it was the operator that came forward with the site plan. It was the operator working with um um uh mass transportation that came up with the access uh recommendations at that time, of course, that was ten years ago, they're gonna be significantly different now than they were then. But but this this is just simply, you know, from a, well, just to take a a sort of sidebar, from a tourism standpoint. Um and all the tourism related businesses that we have here, small businesses that that relate to it uh is is an additional plus for this project. So um I I'm, I I I think that uh uh whatever we can do to be, to demonstrate that we're prepared here in Lemonster to accept designation for the license is is important and that we get it done as quickly as we can. So whatever course is right, Dick and 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 John, um we we need to move forward as quickly as possible, because hopefully we will know where the legislature comes out on this um by the time they develop the budget. And and that's, you know, in a couple of months. July, by July thirty first, April. Yeah, couple of months, so we 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 need to be prepared.
What did we do ten years ago to get ready for for the slot parlors, right?
Well, the slot parlor was a lot smaller footprint, a lot smaller footprint.
Just as small.
A lot smaller.
I gotta keep in mind.
And 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 you know, your point about.
It was like forty million versus, you know.
They, they do, did they do a traffic study, cause it was what we said.
Nobody was. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we did.
And Walmart was there and all that stuff was there.
Hmm, I don't think.
Walmart was there.
Ten years ago, Walmart was there.
Walmart was there. It was there.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Walmart was there.
Okay.
Was Walmart?
Well, whatever, two thousand.
I I live right there, Trump is there.
Yeah, okay.
It was there. Walmart was two thousand.
Walmart, ten years ago, nobody had prepared, because they just came out, said, okay, now we're gonna finally issue licenses, so everybody started from the same point. Right now, we're willing to get ahead of everybody, it's a different.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the, you know, the the project was was pale by comparison to what we're really hoping for now with with a resort casino. And um and so everything in terms of of the infrastructure is gonna be and and the time that's elapsed and the development that's happened is gonna be, make that.
Have you got much of your residents in the area?
But um that's that's my my only pitch, is that we really, you know, from an economic development standpoint, this region needs this casino. Um and Lemonster, if it's ready, is the right place to put it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well.
All right, boy, what do we need?
I don't, I don't think we just approved that.
I think, I think what we've tried to do
I don't know.
Um as a committee, okay? We're gonna have to look at this and sit down with your folks and come up, come up with an actual plan. And we'll probably have to do that offline. Okay, I think we set up a sub, subcommittee to work out all the details. Not only, uh you, I mean, you got a few, you got some of these marked off and some out and maybe they should be expanded. Uh you, I don't know, um the uh.
Let me just explain what I was.
So then let, so that we could.
Well, we checked off the land. The totals around a hundred and five acres.
Yeah.
We have talked to Mr. Dirk, who is the owner of um the land, yeah.
Which land is that?
Yeah, down down below, to the south of the the big parcel of Lemonster, the Churros Corporation.
Right.
All right, and and to the, I guess to the south of the city owned land, and then it it proceeds south of there.
This is Lancaster, right?
Lancaster is the.
Yeah, sorry, right up to the line.
The Lancaster is right on four, uh uh.
Is that his lot? Does it, does his lot extend to Lancaster?
He 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 owns land, he owns land in Lancaster as well, yeah, he goes over.
I'm sure you know.
Yeah, I don't know, we have, we have, we have asked, we have not asked the state yet.
Yeah, if it could have that, any access would have to come through Lancaster.
Can I just point out?
So the Lancaster property is between us and the.
No, I know.
Okay, we gotta go slower, you're right. Can I just point out one thing on your mound?
Okay, good, yeah.
So this parcel here, we just approved to be a sixty thousand square foot warehouse that's gonna have a parade of tractor trailers going down jungle road to go and get to it. And it's it's literally next to where your wart dog.
Well, I just, jungle road is not, it's gonna be the way.
I think, no way.
No way.
Jungle road angel.
So what, we do it, if.
It starts there, that's what's.
Not do it in all of the industry.
Yeah, so we're spending an hour talking about something that's not before us, and like just then file the.
Yeah.
File the petition to resolve and we'll do it.
You got a place on this, man, for the recent things when.
To approve, right?
And then you'll see the quality of this. I don't know, I certainly support what you're doing.
I'm gonna say the same thing with you. Can't advise on my.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And we, 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 just tell us the direction you want us to go, we'll do it.
So how do we move it forward?
I, I don't know, Mr. Sabatelli, I don't know, we're not an advisory board, I think you gotta file, I, the cleanest way is for there to be. I I think the cleanest way to do this is is, we have to, we have to change the ordinance to include a definition for casino and then include a casino overlay district. But I don't think it's for the planning board to.
Do that.
Initiate anything, because we're we're supposed to be neutral, we're not supposed to be, cause then we have to determine whether or not.
Throw a bunch of hurt.
After everything's again, it's site planned and special permit.
Everything's complied with.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's gonna come back before the board with site plan and special permit.
Yeah, that's right.
Or, well, it depends, now I'm reading, you know, that's that's up to how we, how, I mean, the city council has to get involved, the city. The the city of Springfield, their ordinance says that within the casino overlay, that it has, it needs a site plan and a special permit, and those are issued and reviewed by their city council. So that's something else you have to take into consideration too. So I don't, that's that's what my suggestion is, that we have to change, we have to include a definition of casino in the ordinance. And then we have to, someone has to petition, and it's not the planning board, to petition to um.
What is the actual overlay, you know?
To amend, to to amend the ordinance to include an overlay district for a casino in in this area.
That could be a problem, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, their petition to us is just, that's an, you know, you sit down with an engineer and say, we wanna include this land, not only your land, but adjacent land to it, so that you can have some expansion. Now, an overlay district doesn't mean necessarily, overlay district does not affect the current zoning. So the current zoning stays the same, so if anybody, you can, you can include additional properties. But it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't change their their property, okay? Or their zoning requirements. So don't think it's just that restricted, so we we try not to, when we do an overlay or we do something, we also could get in, this is large enough, but probably not, we get into a thing we call spot zoning. And which we really very cautious of, okay?
Good spot.
Yeah, now this is a big spot, okay, and usually we're talking about things, but that, those are things that you have to be conscious about, cause those are the things that people come back at you for. So we try to hit that off, so if you include your property and some other property, doesn't really affect them, but just say this is an overlay that in the future could happen here, okay? And so with that in mind, I think that, I think that's what, the the walking, people get listening to Carol and getting the input from from Springfield, yeah, that's probably the way we wanna do it, but there's gonna you know, that, and at the same time, we've gotta look at, at where our ordinances have to change to allow high rises. Okay, specifically, um and what do we have to do there, because more, and we've we've gotta look at that also, because on the other hand, people are coming at us to do high rises for housing. So the same criteria for high rises for housing would be similar for hotels. So we've got, that's already on our book, or something that we're gonna look at. So it's not the same, but similar enough in generalities, okay? So so we're we're somewhat on track and we've been doing some work, cause we already have a committee working offline on housing. So we can, they they can work on some of the the high rising issues and and you guys can come back to us with an actual overlay plan, say, okay, it's an overlay and this is what we're shooting for. And uh and then we'll, we'll discuss it, we'll have our hearings, and then we turn it over to the city council. And then the city, we make the recommendation to the city council. But the faster you get that done, the better off we are.
We got an engineer, we need an engineer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to be engineered up.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Because that means that they, cause they have to, you know, cause you have to know the actual survey markets and lines and and some of that stuff. And we do the overlay, and then like I said, and I think you got another hurdle here, is it came up today with Lancaster. Because if you look at that white line, that line is the border. So the white Lancaster is between us and and one ninety. So if we're gonna say we wanted another exit, or if we wanted to come. So if we're gonna say we wanted another exit, or if we wanna come off, we've gotta come through, it's gotta come through Lancaster.
We had enough trouble from Lancaster last time.
Yeah.
Mr. Campabasso.
Okay.
They thought the highway was gonna go two day yard.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I hope we, I hope we've given you some direction and where to go.
Very much. This is a pass.
Okay.
So, Mr. Savatelli, your team is rolling.
I give you a momentum pass.
Turn around.
He's just joking, everyone.
Just joking, yeah. Hey, you be a thank you. Thank you, very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Okay.
Six point four.
Kids?
Uh.
Six point five.
This is five four.
Six point four. Let it date at April twenty nine, twenty twenty four, Peter Copland, rezoning three ninety one Harvard Street for self storage, board review letter and discuss.
People being so patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the uh, rest of the group to come in. Let's go for the record, uh, my name is Peter Campabasso. Office is at three Fox Street, Leominster. I'm here tonight with members of U-Haul, Matthew Pepin, I've been working with them since uh probably January, December of last year. And the the background for the communication that I sent um, back in January or so, Matt and I had a meeting with the mayor regarding uh, the property on Harvard Street across from the plaza. And we're, uh, we had suggested to the mayor that um, the self storage use that they wanna put in there is not allowed under the bylaw. So, we initially thought about rezoning the parcel. Um, we did some research, we did some background work. We realized that there was a big zoning amendment, uh, many years ago. Um, and based on the discussion, we ended up going before the uh, technical review board, we gave a presentation there. We spoke about the differences between amending the bylaw to change it back to industrial, because the land was previously zoned industrial. And when the zoning changed the place, it was changed from an industrial zone to a mixed use one zone. Um, we went before the technical review board, we had some discussions with them, we explained the differences. And what came from that meeting was, well, you might wanna go, you know, talk to the planning board uh, and and get some feedback, because our, our position is that it probably makes the most sense to amend the table of uses instead of doing a zoning uh, change of parcel. Uh, to allow the self storage use to be a use allowed by a special permit in the MU one district. When you go through the bylaw and you look at the zoning districts in the table of uses um, self storage is listed under the business uses of the uh, table of uses, but it's only allowed in an industrial zone. Um, when you look at the MU one purpose uh, the purpose of the MU one was to sort of take old industrial use buildings or industrial land and sort of let them be integrated for other types of business uses, so that the properties could be revitalized. Um, but it's it's, when you, when you look through the table of uses and you look at what a business use is and what a business use is defined as and when you look at the industrial uses, for instance um, warehousing, which is an industrial use, is allowed by right in the industrial zone, in the MU one zone, and in the MU two zone. By right, without a special permit, without anything. But when you look at self storage, it's only allowed in in the industrial district, it's not allowed in the MU one and it's not allowed in the MU two. And there are other things in the bylaw, uh, when you read what the definition of self storage is um, you know, storage of personal property versus warehousing, which is the storage of of goods or merchandise. Um, it kinda makes sense, um, that it would be beneficial to amend the table of uses versus amending the parcel to go back to industrial, so we're just here to sort of present that, get some feedback and 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 maybe get an indication that that seems like the right way to go.
So, Mr. Campabasso, what, is it just the rental of um, of trucks there now?
It's, no, no, this is, this is across the street.
This is different.
This is where the dogs were.
Oh, okay.
So.
It's that whole area in the.
So the, the, where the present, um, U-Haul facility is, that's still zoned industrial.
Right. Right.
When you cross the street, um, where the Doggy Day Camp building is, that used to be industrial, it was changed to the MU one uh, district.
When was that changed?
Uh, two thousand thirteen. When, when the zoning, when the bylaw.
Did it take change though, why landed where?
So, well, there was a very.
Orchard Park.
So that Orchard Park is going there.
There there was a very big, um.
No, Orchard Park was before that.
It was?
Oh, yeah.
Then why did we change it?
Well, there was a.
I mean, in the law.
Alright, you know what, I don't wanna know.
Yeah.
I don't wanna know.
You don't wanna know.
Just, just for clarification, that that rezoning of Orchard Park in this particular parcel across the street's MU two, um, on this side of Harvard Street with the Doggy Day Camp building, it's MU one, so but you're right, we don't have to go down uh, that avenue, but all the changes took place in two thousand thirteen. And there were a lot of recommendations by uh, the consulting firm that was working for the city by Steve Malaney, Mark Budanza at the time. Uh, and the bylaw that was amended finally by the city council is in its present state. And when I've gone through it, um, it seems like there's some inconsistencies, um, which just really don't make sense. Granted, um, the self storage business model has changed substantially. I think if you look at some of the newer facilities that are going up um, they're big, what appeared to be office buildings, and you never know that there's self storage units in there. And there's multiple components to the business, there's the store itself, where they sell packaging products, boxes, tapes, whatever. Uh, and it's gonna be used primarily uh, for individual households to store their personal property. Uh, which would seem more like a business use versus an industrial use. So, um, that's our intention, um, as I said, because of the uh uh, the steps we've taken prior to tonight, the recommendation uh, that we received from the technical review was to sort of come to the planning board and just sort of discuss it, get some feedback and see if there was a strong uh, slant towards amending the table of uses or a strong slant towards rezoning.
I think, I've, we've done that before, where we've amended the table of uses.
Right.
I can't re, I can't remember what it was, but we did it.
Well.
I, I just can't remember what the process was.
I I think, you know, at the time on the original zoning way back, the original was just mixed use. And that that included both of these, all these properties. And the old, the idea, never done in two thousand. And when we went from, it was, it was geared towards this property here, because it was originally industrial and a number of people had tried to develop and found out it was just cost where they, just didn't exist. Uh, it was just too expensive. So by changing it to mixed use, we allowed the commercial into the mixed use. So, that's how commercial and industrial got married together. So then said, the original idea was, if you did one third of the property, commercial the other two thirds stayed industrial, which you had to develop the entire, I'll I'll use a hundred, I guess, for a number. You had to develop the entire uh, parcel, but one third could be used. And that's what happened up there on the, up on that hill, is is that they had to take that hill down uh, twenty five or thirty feet, something like that. Then, you know, they got it flat enough to to build a building that they're there today. And, so that was the original mixed use. I wanna get into the changes, people said, what, we, there was a feeling that in the city, that we had to do more to the zoning. And that's when the city council got involved and they came up with all these others, and they took the mixed use and mixed it into three different. But there was a lot of different ideas at the time. So, when I look at it, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, that this piece of property is I'm looking for the best use of that property that I can get, okay, and that that's my feel.
This is a good use.
So, I don't have a problem with that, okay? So, the use, you want it to be done right, and changing the, the easiest way rather than overlay, I don't like that, like overlay, is in the mixed use one that we do allow it with a special permit or whatever we decide to do. So I said, okay, uh, in in mixed use one, we take, we change the definition or the the table of uses uh, to allow uh, self storage. And I know the self storage, we might have to look at it again, I don't know if there's any, any criteria that we have to look at that I don't know about. But I've seen a lot of them going up all over the place, and they're totally different than the flat one story buildings that we had for years. I mean, I I go to Florida and I see, I mean, after around every corner, there seems like there's another one, they're three, four, five yards.
But you're gonna see a car going into, cause it's, it's a low, I'm sure it's a very low traffic.
That's why, that's why.
Even once they drop it.
That's why.
Yeah, the traffic comes along.
That's why we submitted the pamphlet, because the business model of self storage has changed drastically from what it used to be way back.
Right.
Um, and to uh Carol's point, um, what what we intend to do, because they own the land, we're gonna petition the city council to start the process. And my sense is that it would probably be an easier process or to go through with changing the table of uses versus
Yeah.
trying to change the.
And and I agree with you, change in the table of uses is an easier way to go. And you go to the city council, the city council can look at it and and uh, because ultimately, they're the ones that have to do it.
It will come to the planning board for a public hearing.
Right.
It comes to us for hearing and recommendation. So if we look at, if we wanna put any additional criteria on it, we can do it at that time, okay? But yeah, I think your next step is, yeah, uh, try to give you some of the history, but this property is, is starting to develop its uh, the value is there, the access is there that we didn't have before. And uh, so I think a cha- change in the table of uses is the, is the way to go. So, um, you get your petitioners, uh, and petition the city council.
I'll I'll save my speech about al- allowing it by right until we come here for the public hearing. Instead of by special permit.
Yeah, we'll 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 concede a little bit.
I'm sorry, you can't.
But I, yeah, we 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 trying to keep you you wanna know the, the difference between by right, special permit and the special permit is you can do that, but we have, we don't have any way of looking at traffic or anything in the area that requires, we we just can't do it, by, you know, by by just site plan.
Right.
So, but, but special permit doesn't mean that it's, we have to be, it allows us to be uh, to work with people and to get things done, cause it works both ways.
Give you some oversight, it allows you to make sure the project's conditioned the right way.
That's right, and that's our, our main goal.
Okay.
So you have my challenge, you're gonna, you're gonna petition the city council for a, for a change, and I think that's probably the way to go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Alright.
Good luck.
We'll see you guys soon. Hopefully soon, yes.
If that, if all is approved, that would be a great improvement to that site.
Sorry for the long wait.
Just thinking, good looking building these days, it's good.
Thank you.
Interesting story.
Much more time.
Sure.
You got a lot of filling.
Junior parking ticket, uh, stamped or.
The site, the site is, you know, the power lines in the back and stuff like that.
That's amazing, you're selling the casino.
It's a real site. Yeah, much easier, yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We were, we were thinking, oh, we, casino, we changed our mind and fully changed it.
Bring you all in and.
Where's where my U, U-Haul casino?
Okay.
Directive report.
Everybody. Directive report. Elizabeth.
Um, I don't have much to say, except that, um, there's a housing conference in Worcester June twelfth and thirteenth, I'll try to get information out to the board, if anybody wants to attend, I'm gonna try to attend. I have to give permission from mayor to go, so, I can't just stand by, I have to fly to go, so we'll see.
I might try to go to one of those days. You know, I don't know if I can do it too.
Alright, anything else?
No, I think that's it, we have motion.
Oh, he's on.
Second way to sell.
Uh.
He gets the same way to sell. Alright.
Motion made in second to adjourn, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carried.